Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the order of the planning board meeting for May 7, 2024. My name's Carrie Martin. I'm Chair of the Planning Board. Before we get started, I'm going to read a few announcements here. This open meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted remotely pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law on March 29, 2023. All members of the Planning Board are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The Act allows the Planning Board to be entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with deliberations of the meeting. Public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the Chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of the meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting may feature public comment. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Bill Pierce?
Here.
Amy Presky?
Here.
Anthony Zaitin?
Here.
Staff and I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Laurie Connors?
Here.
Great. Ground rules for tonight: The Chair will invite each speaker or applicant on the agenda by name to make a presentation and speak to their application. Participants will write their full name and hold until their name is called. Each speaker will be asked to mute their phone or computer when not speaking, and speak clearly in a way that helps determine accurate meeting minutes. Those responding will be asked to wait until the floor is yielded to them by the Chair. Speakers who wish to respond to the comments of others do so through the Chair, taking care to identify themselves. Each vote taken by the Board will be conducted by rule call vote. For public comments, after members have spoken, Chair will afford public comment as follows: By phone dial *9 to raise your hand in ways to be recognized by the Chair. Please know party or phone number will be visible to those of you in the meeting. By Zoom, click Raise Hand at the bottom of your screen in ways to be recognized by the Chair. The Chair will ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the Chair has listed all public commentators, the Chair will call on each by name and afford approximately three minutes. There is no executive session tonight, so with that, we will get started with the agenda. So the first item on our agenda is a public meeting regarding the preliminary subdivision for 0200, 220 and 250 Southwest Cut Off. We have a public meeting notice that I'll read into record here. Okay. And actually, Laurie, do I need to read this into the record? The same notice that...
I would, since it was sent to the Butters.
Sure. Okay, so this is a memo that was sent to Butters within 300 feet of 0200, 220 and 250 Southwest Cut Off. You're receiving this meeting notice as you own property located within 300 feet of 0200, 220 and 250 Southwest Cut Off, map 106 parcels 2, 3, 5, and 19. On April 18, 2024, Northborough Properties Realty Trust filed a preliminary subdivision plan to create a two-lot subdivision served by a cul-de-sac. The Planning Board will hold a meeting on May 7, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. to hear a presentation from the applicant about their proposal. Copy of the application and plans are located on the Planning Department's webpage on the Town of Northborough website. Pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law on March 29, 2023. This meeting will be conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance by members of the public will be permitted to participate in the public comment portions of this meeting from a PC, Mac, iPad, iPhone, or Android device. Please click the URL provided in the notice. Contact Laurie Connors Planning Director at 508-393-5040 if you have any questions. Okay, great. So we have that, and with that, why don't we invite... Let's see, it looks like we have James Almonte, and then you said Wayne?
Wayne Bellick and Wayne Kimball. I'm not sure who the other folks are.
Okay, so I'll invite this group and see if there's anyone else on their team. Hello, welcome.
Hello.
Hi, Wayne.
Hello.
Hello, so right now I have three people. Is there anyone else on your team that needs to be brought in?
This is James Almonte from Land Design Collaborative. Principal with the firm and Registered Landscape Architect. And I believe Wayne Bellick from our office is also on the call.
Great, and we have Wayne Kimball on the call as well. Anyone else that you need, or is that it?
I think that should be it.
Okay, great. So why don't... Do you have a presentation that you'd like to make this evening to talk through your plans, your preliminary subdivision plan?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, great. Are you able to share your screen?
Um, let's see. Not sure where that option is.
Oh, do we have...
So, alright, this is a webinar, so this is a little different than a regular Zoom.
Do you have Share Screen at the bottom?
There you go. I just got promoted.
There we go.
There you go. Alright. And everyone see my screen and still hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Okay, again, James Almonte from Land Design Collaborative. We're here tonight to present a two-lot industrial subdivision for the property located on Route 20. Just before I get started, I don't think there's any secret here, the reasons why we're submitting this. It is basically to freeze the zoning. And the purpose of that is, the Kimbells have no intention of developing the property in, you know, in the next few years, but they did want to keep their options open for future development, whatever that may be, you know, industrial use, or even complying with the new zoning of the new highway business district. So they just basically want to keep their options open, so that is why we had filed the preliminary subdivision. So... Again, so prior to submitting, we had a couple of informal meetings with Laurie Connors, Planning Director, just to confirm the filing procedures and requirements. And then prior to submission, we had a pre-submission meeting with her to confirm that the...
Sorry.
That's okay. That the submission was complete, so she had a couple of opportunities to review that information prior to filing. So the filing that you submitted, we anticipate is a complete package. So I'll just kind of walk through the existing conditions first. So the lot is comprised of four different parcels totaling about just under 58 acres. It's located on the west side of Route 20, which is shown on the bottom of the screen here. North is to the right of the page. So it was located in the industrial zoning district. We all know that has changed now. A small portion of the front corner, the northeast corner of the lot, is also located in the groundwater overlay protection district area 3. That is this dash line shown here. Topography on the site is, as you would expect with a typical mining operation, it ranges from, you know, flat, very flat, to very steep in some areas where they're doing the current mining operation. There's a number of processing stations for the different types of aggregate onsite. There's also a scale house. And of the 58 acres, about 38 or so are currently being mined or have already been mined. And the property is also subject to the earth removal permit, which is renewed yearly with the Earth Removal Board, and is in good standing. There's also two unconfirmed wetlands on the property. The upper corners here, a smaller one located to the northwest, and a larger one located to the southwest. There's also an intermittent stream associated with that wetland, but there are no... There's no perennial streams, no riverfront area, no floodplain, and no natural heritage jurisdiction associated with this property. There's a water main located in Route 20, and there's also a sewer force main located in Route 20 that runs across the front of the property to the pump station directly adjacent to the south. The site is also conducive to onsite wastewater, a onsite wastewater disposal system, so that is also an option as well. So that's the existing conditions. That's kind of an overview of the property. And then we also had some enlargements of the property that shows the topography. As you can see, it's typical of a mining operation. You see some stockpiles located here, and then, you know, the flatter areas. There's a haul road located here off of Route 20 as well. So these are kind of the, I think there's a 40-scale enlargement plans. This is the pump station located to the south here. And then to the southwest, this is the wetland I was mentioning. And then a smaller one located to the northwest. None of these have been confirmed, but they were delineated and located, but not confirmed with conservation. So as part of the proposal, again, it's a two-lot industrial subdivision with a subdivision road coming off of Route 20, the west side of Route 20, basically in the same location as the current driveway. Again, a 300-foot cul-de-sac servicing two lots. Shown here, there's Lot 1 is about 10.6 acres, which is shown here. Lot 2 is the larger lot, which is about 46.8 acres. The subdivision road is a 50-foot right-of-way with a 60-foot diameter cul-de-sac. Pavement width is 28 feet. And then during the straight portion of the road and on the cul-de-sac, the paved section is 50 feet. There's a four-foot grass strip around both sides, as well as a five-foot sidewalk on both sides of the subdivision road, along with vertical granite curbing, all designed in accordance with the Northborough subdivision rules and regulations. We're also showing grading, drainage, stormwater, and utilities in a general manner as part of the preliminary subdivision submission. The subdivision road is graded up at 2% from the edge of pavement on Route 20 to a high point, about halfway through the subdivision road, and then back down again at 3%. And again, stormwater is shown in a general manager. Manage, and I'll scroll to those pages, so this is an enlargement of the subdivision road. We're also showing a drainage easement, which would surround the proposed stormwater system. And then we're reserving the right for the potential of a sewer connection to the sewer pump station via a force main that would be located on our property and will run along our frontage. That's shown here in this dash line. This is kind of an overview, an enlargement of the area. So the shaded area is the paved section of the road, and again, creating frontage for two lots. And then this is the profile of the road. So again, this is the edge of pavement on Route 20 here, rated up at about 2% to a high point, and then back down at 3%. We're also showing the potential water connection through 20, as well as sewer and other utilities. So this is an enlargement of the subdivision road, again, stormwater and a general manner with connections for drainage to handle from the subdivision road. So all of this will be designed in accordance with the local and state regulations for stormwater and other requirements. We believe that this current proposal, the current and proposed use, industrial use conforms with the 2020 master plan prepared for the Town of Northborough with respect to key elements such as land use and economic development. The industrial land use is a much-needed continuing source of real estate tax revenue and will support the much-needed growth for industrial uses, not only in Northborough but other areas. It will not draw on the town services such as the school system and any other uses that include mixed use would draw. And the location on Route 20, you know, in close proximity to Route 9, which are both state roads, and close to the town line further, limit the draw on services from the town, and also on the wear and tear of the local roads. So that's essentially the proposal of the subdivision. So at this point, I don't know if there's any questions. Be happy to answer.
Great, thank you. Board members, do you have questions? No? Okay, I have some questions. And Laurie, you'll have to refresh my memory. I know we have preliminary and definitive subdivisions, and I was just, when I was going back to go through the rules and regs, there were a couple of things I just want to make sure we don't actually need at this point. And one was the impact statement. Does that come with the definitive?
That's correct.
Okay, got it. But then a couple of things. For example, Fred's letter mentioned if this is the right location for a road, and I do think we're supposed to kind of square up on the town engineer's questions a little bit. And I know obviously you haven't come with a traffic analysis, and perhaps that's for the impact statement. But I don't know if other board members wondered about this, if they read Fred's comment and also wondered about this location for the road. We have Northborough Crossing there, what is it, hitching post across the street, the traffic light. There's a lot happening here, so I don't know if... Board members, did you have thoughts on this road location, or...
I did, but I thought I was going to ask Laurie too, if that would be a condition on an approval going forth to the definitive plan. Like, could we ask for a condition that a traffic study in the road location be evaluated by a traffic engineer? Yeah, I mean, it's part of the development impact statement that they evaluate traffic. I think Fred's comment primarily had to do with ensuring that there was no conflict. So in the preliminary plan requirements, you have to show roads within the vicinity of the proposed roadway, but there are driveways in the vicinity of the proposed roadway that weren't shown. They're not required to be shown, but he recommended that they be shown because there's a residential condo development across the street, and then there's also the Northborough Crossing. So when you do the definitive plan, if you could show those driveways and think about the alignment of this roadway, we want to make sure that there aren't going to be any conflicts.
Okay, that's great. And I realize you mentioned this was pretty much to secure the zoning. So first of all, I appreciate your honesty on that. But also, I recognize that you're probably not going to launch down, go into ConCom at this point and all of that, but that's not something we need now at this point anyway, Laurie, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then usually we get DPW to comment on, I believe it's always been the preliminary, but I didn't see any DPW comments on this.
I know that Scott and Fred collaborated on the letter, so I think you should consider that letter to be a joint effort of the DPW Director and Fred.
Okay, usually though, Scott provides more about, I don't know, just seemed to not have his usual input. So maybe it's because of function of, obviously you didn't ask for waivers, so there's that whole element. I was surprised to not see more Scott-driven comments, but if he was a part of it, then so be it. And then police and fire, we have our whole checklist. The whole checklist is also definitive when police, fire, everybody looks at it.
Yeah, we submitted this plan to all of the department heads. They just chose not to comment at this time.
Really? Even the... That's surprising. Well, I guess this is the preliminary, so maybe we lost the piece. Okay. I think that was it for my comments. Did anyone else, did that spark any additional comments or thoughts?
Yeah, in case I missed it, so does Mass State Highway, they weigh in on this?
They will ultimately, because they have to provide the curb cut. So Route 20 is, of course, a Mass EOT jurisdiction roadway.
Okay.
And then any comments from James, from you at all, or... You don't have to. Okay.
No, I have no comments.
Oh, sorry, cut you off there. Just say it again.
I do not have any additional comments.
Okay. Anything I will accept, it's not a public hearing, but of course we'll accept any public comments at this time. If anyone has anything, if you just raise your hand, we'll call you in. Okay, no comments at this time. So I think for our options are approved preliminary or approved with modifications. Those are, and I don't believe we have any modifications at this point. Is there any board concern with a reason we would not vote tonight, or any additional information we need? Does this, well, why don't we go through the criteria, I guess, for preliminary? Should we do that?
Sure.
Okay, so let's see. It's a different... For anybody watching at home and are wondering where they can find subdivision, it is actually not in the bylaws. It's a separate section under the Planning Department for Subdivision Rules and Regs. Let's see. So looking at the preliminary plan.
Carrie? I was just wondering if you wanted to ask the Butters if they were interested in making any comments or had any questions?
Oh, I did open up to public comments, and nobody had anything. Did you think?
Okay, I'm sorry. Maybe I spaced out during that moment. Sorry about that.
No, there was not anyone who raised their hands. I'll give it another shot. If anybody has anything they want to contribute or ask? Okay, I don't think so. Do we get any emails? Laurie, I think you anticipated somebody commenting. Is that why you double-checked? Do you would? Does anything come through an email that we should be aware of?
Not via email. I did speak to a gentleman on the phone who was in a butter, and he had some questions that we spoke about, and I suspect he might be in the audience there. But if his hand isn't raised, I suppose he has no follow-up questions.
Okay, I do not see any questions this time. Okay, let's see. So for preliminary, do you guys see the criteria which page this is on? Oh, there should include the following. Okay, so is this just the criteria here on page? What page am I on? 16? No. Yep.
I have it opened online, so it doesn't have a page.
Okay. Well, really, it's just the requirements of the application. I just want to make sure I'm looking in the right spot.
Should start at the top with what? It's like 10-16-030?
The Form and Content section. I think that's what I'm on. Yes, it is. Okay. So let's see. Do you want me to read through here? I mean, really, it's just basic requirements at this point. Subdivision name, boundaries, title, preliminary plan, names of record owner, applicant, name and designer, names of the Butters. Did we get that in our packet?
I'm not sure if you got that in your packet, but I do have the certified list of the Butters in mine.
Okay, okay, great. Well, we don't have names, location, and whis of adjacent streets.
But you do have streets, just not the private driveways, so...
Perfect.
Technically, they comply, although Fred made a good point by asking for those driveways.
Okay, that's great. Boundary lines of proposed lots, existing buildings and significant structures, proposed system of drainage. Did we get that?
So Fred did make a comment. He was concerned because of the amount of rock on site. So he did ask for an ultimate discharge point for the proposed stormwater basin. So technically, they complied with the preliminary plan standard, I mean, requirement of showing the drainage in a general manner. But as part of the definitive plan, of course, the expectation is for more detail.
Okay. Let's see, so that's comment five from Fred. He notes the permit for Mast dot, meeting with water and sewer. Okay.
I don't see comment four on the decision that you did, Laurie. I can add that. The reason why I didn't include it is because it's also a requirement of the definitive plan, so I thought that it would be mute. But if you feel more comfortable me adding it, so that is the reference to showing the driveways, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'd be happy to add that, just better safe than sorry. Right?
Yep. Okay, so let's see. Then that is covered. We saw the topography. There's a note from Fred to meet with water and sewer for that. Zoning. Was there the buffer zone in there?
I don't think the buffer zone is applicable, because there aren't adjacent residential areas.
Yeah, I see. Okay, got it. Let's see.
And even with that, would it have to have buildings on it? Wouldn't that be where the buffer zone would be? Um, I mean, look at the zoning. It's, they just talked about 50-foot buffer zone at the end of the preliminary subdivision, but I was thinking about that, and what would be the 50 feet, like, if there's no building on it yet, or even? So technically, there's another, so the driveway for the shops wraps around this project site. So this project site does not directly above the residential district, so they don't have to provide the 50-foot buffer.
Okay. Compliance with the master plan was talked about, although not necessarily written. Or was that included in the application?
We did have a paragraph in the cover letter addressing that.
This is a funny one for you guys. Blasting. If any blasting's anticipated.
Yeah, we actually addressed that as well. I mean, there's obviously ongoing blasting, and they do comply with all of the, you know, local and state regulations for that. You know, when this, when and if this ever does get developed, the anticipation would be that most of the blasting would be done at that point. It'll be a pad-ready site, so we did have a paragraph in the cover letter addressing that as well.
Okay, so...
It's at noon every day. I live near it, and I didn't realize till the other day. Someone's like, "That blast goes off always at noon."
That's funny.
So it must be timed.
Okay, so going through the criteria, hopefully everyone is reading along with that. Does any board member feel like the criteria has not been met for the preliminary subdivision? Plan, that is?
No.
No.
Okay. Okay, so like I mentioned, we can, certainly we could disapprove the plan. It doesn't sound like we're in that direction, so then either we can approve it with or without modification. It doesn't sound like there's any modifications outside of whatever we're putting in for various conditions in the decision. So Laurie, if we are putting conditions in, that's not necessarily approval with modification, is it?
That's correct. So really, it's guidance to the applicant of what the expectation is for submission with the definitive plan.
Okay, so this is an approval with conditions.
So it's just telling them to advance to the definitive plan stage and what the expectations are.
Okay, however, we should give a vote, a formal vote on this?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so let's see. Let me look. Laurie, I know you actually helped to draft a decision, and you said you were adding any additional, one additional comment there. Did all board members have a chance to look at the draft decision at this point?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other thoughts on that decision?
Nope.
Okay, so then, in that case, let's see. Is there a motion to approve the preliminary subdivision plan located at 0200, 220, and 250 Southwest Cut Off Street, map 106, Parcels 2, 3, 5, and 19?
It's removed.
And 20.
I'm sorry.
You want to make it subject to conditions A through Y. Actually, we're adding one, so it'd be A through Y.
Okay, and I missed a property on that list?
Yeah, I think you stopped at 19.
Oh, that's what it is in the decision. Is there 20 as well?
Oh, Fred's letter has 20 in it. I'm looking at Fred's letter. It's 0200, 220, and 250 Southwest Cut Off.
I know, but then Parcels 2, 3, 5, and 19 is all I have. Is there?
That's what I have as well. Fred's memo adds 20. Maybe that's just a typo.
Oh, he did add 20.
Well, I'm sure the engineer team would know best. I believe it's only four parcels, so... Can you confirm, James?
I'm looking right now. So I'm looking at the Form B with... So I'm looking at the Form B, lists one oh six, two, three, five, nineteen, and twenty. And so does the certified of Butters list, two, three, five, nineteen, and twenty.
Okay, we'll add that.
Okay, good catch, thank you. Okay, so then, the, the, is there a motion to approve the preliminary subdivision plan located at zero, two hundred, two twenty, and two fifty Southwest Cut Off Street, map one oh six, parcels two, three, five, nineteen, and twenty, subject to conditions A through I?
To move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, Bill?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Carrie's an aye. Okay, great, so hopefully you have what you need, and thanks for your presentation.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Thank you, likewise, have a good night, folks.
Okay, next on the agenda are A and R's lot releases and bonds, I don't believe we have any there, is there anything there?
We do not.
Okay, great, so next we have minutes for approval for March fourth, nineteenth, and twenty-fifth. March fourth, I don't think had amendments, that was as submitted, is that true?
No amendments.
Okay, did everyone have a chance to read the minutes from March fourth?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the minutes from March fourth as submitted? Second.
Second.
All in favor, Bill?
Aye.
Amy, Amy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Carrie's an aye. Anthony, you're laughing, it was distracting me, I feel like laughing. Okay, I was not at the March nineteenth meeting, so I need to abstain, so all of you will need to be able to vote on these minutes. Did everybody read these minutes and ready to vote on them? March nine?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And these are as submitted, no, I think with the twenty-fifth was the only one with amendments, as far as I saw, okay, great. Is there a motion to accept the March nineteenth minutes as submitted?
To move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, Bill?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Carrie abstains. March twenty-fifth, there were amendments made to the minutes, did everyone have a chance to read the amended minutes? Okay, any further amendments? Okay, is there a motion to accept the March twenty-fifth minutes as amended?
To move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, we'll give that one to Bill, the second to Bill, all in favor, Amy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Carrie's an aye. Okay, that's it for minutes, any subcommittee updates?
Design review meets this Thursday. So we meet Thursday with our final meeting with the fire station, but that's about it. We survived town meeting, so we're still meeting.
Yes. Any other subcommittee updates? Okay, next planning board meeting, we have the twenty-first, fire station's coming back for that, anything on June fourth happening, Lori, that you know of?
No, so far I have nothing on the agenda.
Oh, okay. And then May twenty-eighth is a ZBA meeting and master plan implementation on May sixteenth. And also, speaking of town meeting, just to thank the planning board and Lori for all your hard work to get those amendments, the bylaw amendments done, and the maps, and the presentations, and answering questions, and all of that, it's, it's a lot of work, and I'm sad that I missed, I missed that night, so everyone seemed to do a great job, and you're all still here, except for Melly, did Melly get, did Melly make it out of town meeting? But anyway, thanks to everybody, that's a lot of work, so, and a lot of pressure, it's hard to get up there and do that, so. Good job, team. Okay, if there's no other business, doesn't sound like there is, is there a motion to adjourn?
To move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, Bill?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Carrie's an aye, meeting adjourned, this is a record, I think.
I was gonna say the same thing. This is our shortest meeting ever in the two years we've been here, so.
Well, enjoy the sunshine, thanks, everybody.